Alright, so this has some stuff in it, but a lot of this exam three study guide has eyes and ears and male GU, which I assume you don't want to do, right? This, this study guide has a lot of eyes, ears and male GU. I mean, it's what we can look at and see if it's accurate, or you can, as you look at it, you can ask me, in direct message, me, ask me, is this accurate or not, right? But this, we can go over this stuff at the beginning. I can't remember if I did this or not. Alright, I don't, did you guys listen to the previous exam review for the final? And you have like two versions of it. You have 2021, you have 2022, and you have, you know, then today, right? So those are, those are also available too. I think most of this came from the 2022 exam review, right? So as far as, you want to just go through these things and answer a few of them or what? Okay, so as far as blood transfusions, so yes, these people are at risk, right? So who has a risk for receiving bloodborne pathogens? HIV, Hep B, Hep C, anybody else? Not autoimmune, no, C diff, no? We've got HIV. There's not really anything else that we went over that would cause like a bloodborne issues, right? So that's really it as far as blood transmission. And then how does that happen though? Alright, so you got IV drug use, IV drug abuser. What else? Needle stick injuries? So because you're at risk for needle stick injuries, you get the HIV vaccine? Now you get the Hep B vaccine, right? You'd have the vaccine to see if they have antibodies for Hep B, right? And then on that same note is what's, you know, who else gets? What's the word? Not titers, I guess you would do titers also. Or gets vaccinated against many things before they start therapies. Sickle cell gets it, who else? Vaccines and checking titers. Good, Mabs. Before starting Mabs, who else? You mentioned sickle cell disease, HIV, they should get all the things, right? Anybody else that's super immunocompromised? Yeah, I mean, if you're severely neutropenic, you might, you might get it. TB, no? TB puts you at risk, so people are going to get tested for TB, right? So, but not TB, because TB testing, right? How you test for TB? You do a PPD, or you do a, a quaniferin. Quaniferin gold, right? That assesses TB, right? Late or active, I'm not going to ask you differentiate which one's which, right? Symptoms, yes, of TB, right? What are symptoms of TB? So sputum TB, there's other symptoms. Are they got the night sweats? They got the malaise, but really it's the night sweats and hemoptysis that really seals the deal. Hemoptysis. Because someone has night sweats and B symptoms and malaise and not feeling good, that could be all leukemias and all lymphomas, right? But when, when you add hemoptysis to that and you add they're homeless and they have, they have all these other risk factors, right? The PPD shows is 12 millimeters, right? These are really spelling out TB, right? And that means you need to be on medications for it, right? Alright, so I asked you a lot of med questions on TV before, so dubious about asking more TV med questions. But as far as symptoms of, you know, TB and recognizing, how do I find out if someone has TB, right? Let's just put this up here. Alright, I think I wowed someone in the crowd. Alright, anyways, we got, what else? So TB testing, PPD, some more about PPD. How do you know about? It's, it's pretty firm, it's been firm for like 30 years, it hasn't changed, right? So healthcare workers, we already tested you on, so we're not going to test you on healthcare workers again. We might test you on someone who is what? Immunocompromised, right? So less than five is immunocompromised. That's a cool word, and it's not going to be there on the test. It's going to have someone who's immunocompromised, who's immunocompromised? HIV, right? They got sickle cell, because you could, you could argue sickle cell, yeah. But it's really someone that is like neutropenic, right? Could be someone like on, who has ulcer colitis even, right? Alright, so anything else on, on that? Less than 10, we was healthcare workers, just to recap and be complete and OCD, right? Healthcare workers. Alright, so anyways, sputum, mucous secretions, transmission. So this is, so we have blood up top, let's just finish it here. Let's put this guy up top here, why is it not working? Alright, so mucous secretions, mucus, let's add fecal oral here. So who gets it? Right, vowels if it vowels. F A and E, who else gets fecal oral? Who else? C diff does, for sure. Right? I mean, you can argue like fecal, it's not fecal oral, it's fecal urine, right? That's really for, what, let's just to put this one, fecal urine. Right, that's where they get a UTI due to ease, right? So VRE and CRE, right? So those can get into their, and from their, from their gut into their urine, and they get a really bad UTI, right? Especially with history of what? Hospitalization, right? These are M DROs, right? I don't think there's any questions that ask you for treatment for M DROs. Like which antibiotic is it, quinipristine, you know, is there not? No, but we will ask you other antibiotic questions, like, you know, generic ones, right? Not generic ones, but of course, the generic name. But that, you know, which ones, like where does it work in the cell cycle, right? So antibiotics. Where in cell cycle? Right, and you have like a 70% chance to get it correct if you say cell wall, right? It won't be a SADA, obviously. Like where in cell cycle, and then what about, what else are you concerned about with antibiotics? With side effects, yes, what, what kind of side effects? Alright, so we already, I think we already asked you C diff one, right? On the last exam? I tried to at least twice, right? As far as like what causes C diff, like who's at risk for C diff, who you're concerned about, right? So C diff, what else you have for antibiotic side effects? QTC, good. QTC photosensitive, that's just really, we're just talking about Bactrim. And we kind of already tested you on Bactrim, but it's a good idea to review it to see, is it, does it have any other, any things we haven't tested on already? Okay. We already gave you linezolid, already tested. Right? CDAD, QTC, what, what prolongs QTC? What was the mnemonic? That what? Just back QT, right? M fat? Macrolides, I'm fat, what is it? M fat, alright, so what is macrolides, right? What else? Fluoroquinolones? And what's the T? Betricyclines. Okay, so that means you have to recognize, right? So if they have a macrolide, or let's say amino glycoside, right? They are on what amino glycosides? Like, well, like which amino glycoside would they be on that might prolong the QT? So patients on gentamicin, right? Patient, right? This can be any one of these, right? Gentamicin. And that means they're going to be at risk for QTC prolongation, right? Which, you know, it can be like, you can identify an EKG, you identify the QT interval, right? Prolong QT? Did it, clinical worksheets, yeah? Or is patient gentamicin, which of these has prolonged QT? Right, which of these is greater than point what? Point four, five, right, seconds, right? And what else could be prolonged QT? Electrolites, no. So this is torsades, right? Someone has torsades, and you look back and why they get torsades, electrolytes are fine, right? And QT prolonging drugs is a significant risk factor. Okay, how many times in clinical did my group stop giving medication because the QTC was prolonged, right? So we have to look at it, they're in an environment where they're monitoring QTC at all times, right? Alright, so what else? So that's good for antibiotics as far as like indications, right? So let's put indications here, right? So you probably put up top, that's where I think about it more. Alright, so indications, right? So what is broad spectrum? Okay, spectrum. Alright, so what's examples of the broad spectrums? Beta lactams, right? That'd be, would vancomycin be broad spectrum? No, that's purity specific, just the gram positives, and we're getting to M DROs as well, right? So beta lactams, what are some examples of beta lactams? So not just penicillin, it has to be something that's broad spectrum. So that's like your Zosin, right? You can argue amp, you can argue the unison and such, but Zosin, and we got, going to next class, we got ceftraxone, ceftraxone, and cefapime, right? And then we can go to the next class, what's the next stronger class? Carapenex, right? So those would be correct answers as far as broad, broad spectrum. And you could argue, argue leviquin, but we don't really do leviquin in the hospital, okay? But leviquin has a side effect of tendon rupture, what else? CDAD and QTC, right? Is that good in antibiotics? You want more, more antibiotic love? Sorry, sorry, levifloxacin, levifloxacin is leviquin, sorry. Okay, are you good in antibiotics? You want to keep going? Those are the questions to be asked, it wouldn't be asking two side effect questions, that's, that's not using my time right, well, right? Or your time, so I want you to be like one-ish questions, alright? Or one-ish question on side effects, and then maybe another question on indications, another question on cell cycle. Okay, really like then side effects kind of is teaching, all wrapped in one, right? Because, you know, QTC is, I'm going to put them on the monitor, and Bactrim, I'm going to make sure they wear sunscreen, and linezolid, we already tested it. C diff, I'm going to assess for what? C diff, but also, you know, which antibiotic was it, right? Alright, so let's keep going, what else we got here? TB testing, sputum, IV push. I got like three questions over the weekend about IV push for eyes. What does that mean? Rosmire for eyes, no? Rosmire's not ophthalmotoxic, they are ototoxic, right? So it's IV push for ears, right? So let's put ears on here just so we're, oh, Vanessa's coming close, okay? Alright, Vanessa, ears, and we got GI, right? Cardiac, so we can just separate it out, right? So it gets put eyes first, right? So what are some eye stuff? IV push wise, to connect the dots with IV push. What about someone who has this rhythm? That's, right? That's not good. Alright, so they have bradycardia, right? That's going to be a, probably going to give them atropine, might even get a little bit of epinephrine, but both of those are what? Mm-hmm, yeah, so atropine and glaucoma patients, right? So you can add this, you know, word this several different ways, avoid what? Sympathomimetics, sympathomimetics, avoid anticholinergics, you can spell this however, what you, what you want. These all don't fall under atropine, or give parasympathomimetics, parasympatho. So mimetics, right? So just make sure you know which, what's a cholinergic med and what's an anticholinergic med, and which ones going to do what, right? Avoid dilated eyes or avoid constricted eyes? Avoid dilated eyes, right? Promote constricted eyes, right? And that's my dry, dry assis, right? Myosis. Does that make sense? You can word that 75 different ways, right? But there's only seven, it's not 75, there's like five different ways you can word it, right? So know which ones are good, right? Don't memorize 10 different things about what not to do and to do, memorize the things to do, and then the other ones are the other ones, right? So just memorize, figure out which one you're going to, to study. Am I going to know which ones to avoid, or am I going to know which ones to give, right? Like which list is smaller, right? And that's usually the one you should study. Okay, that's just a studying tip, right? Am I going to study, okay, no, no, yes, yes, no, no, yes, yes. I was going to study the no, no stuff, right? Unless it's something random, like, you know, head of bed, this, and, you know, you know, eye shield that, and, you know, curtain vision this, so then that's, you have to understand those little things, right? Alright, so that's eye stuff, right? Glaucoma, other eye stuff, not really, there's nothing else we can give, alright? There's, you have, you know, eye medications that should be on the study guide at the bottom, like complications, systemic complications, right? Of eye stuff, what's something that comes to mind? Of giving eye drops? Day, check this. Eye drops, what happens if procedure not done? Blindness, what? Why would you get blind? I'm not seeing it, well, I guess glaucoma, right? From uncontrolled glaucoma? Photosensitive, yeah, but that's, you're going to be photosensitive after you like come from the eye doctor, because your eyes are dilated, but none of these really dilate your eyes. WMD doesn't really have eye drops, they have intraventricular injections, right? What has systemic side effects? What eye drops have systemic side effects? That's what I hear, beta blockers too, right? You have bradycardia systemic, right? You don't have a heart in your eyeball, right? That's a systemic side effect, you've got bradycardia, right? Bronchospasm, that's an important side effect, that's systemic, right? Most of the other eye drops are all self-contained, right? Alright, back up top, see, what are we talking about, atropine? Okay, so ears, what are some ear medications? Such as? You can just put ototoxic in general, right? Gentamicin, which is a what? Antibiotic, yes, which is a? Nucleic acids, right? Which means it could be any one of them, right? And then what else is ototoxic? What is it? Macrolides, which is? And then what else is ototoxic? Vanco, yeah? Chemo, I really put, put in there, right? Which chemo? It's this platinum. Alright, and then ears, that's good for ears, but also for ears, we have, let's just put this down here. Good. Alright, so I mean, like the size just puts Lasix at the end there. Diuretics, right? But yeah, it's reversible. But what else about ears that we might give medications for? It's also the correct answer at the end of the sentence there. Or what? Eye drops or many years, right? Alright, so then GI, what are some GI meds? Promotiv, ibuprofen, yes, is a GI med, but it's not an IV push, I was trying to do IV push here. So GI, we got some anti-metics, right? We have anti-ulcer, which includes your H2RAs and PPIs, right? And then we would avoid with what? When would you like not give a tonics? You give PPIs with NSAIDs, that's actually when, like someone has RA or OA and they need to take their, their NSAIDs, we will hit them up with some, some PPIs. Steroids, no, you, you give it if they have steroids, steroids put your risk for ulceration and bleeding, right? Would you give pentoprazole if they're bleeding? I had to phrase it correctly, because yes, pentoprazole can cause bleeding if we have like a H pylori infection, right? But do you give this for H pylori? Isn't it part of the quadruple therapy? Yeah, alright, give it for H pylori. Look, but doesn't it cause H pylori? Yes, but if you get like prolonged use, but it's actually also the treatment for H pylori, right? But avoid with who? They have? CDAD, usually give it for GI bleeds, right? Give it for H pylori and GI bleeds. Alright, so that's what it's given for. They just use the strongest one, which is pentoprazole, usually. Alright, so H2RAs, anything we got to avoid with? Kind of that was the same thing, but H2RAs are usually innocuous, they don't do that much. You could argue with some bone marrow suppression, but elderly and they get confused, confused old person. But really, there's not many side effects with that one. But let's go back to like in general for IV push, or let's just put complications. IV push cardiac meds, want to know those, right? So we already talked about atropine, right? What's atropine for? He just wanted to know your A, B, C, D, right? The reversals and what they are, right? So dentazine for and recognize EKG, right? Right, atropine for, recognize EKG. Alright, so then what's B? Also, atropine was, sorry, this is confusing, A, because amiodarone, atropine's not actually on this list, it's just not confuse you, because this is kind of extra, right? But amiodarone's on the list, right? Alright, and then this also QT, but I think I already tested you on that tonight. Alright, so dentazine, right? What else do we have? What's B? Beta blockers, right, for? Right, who's, who are the beta blockers for? These are all for tachyryrhyms, right? For HR rhythms. HR rhythms, such as? Right, can you recognize the things, right? And then we got calcium blockers, we got what else? What's D for? Dejoxin, right? And then what are the reversals for each? Right, so? Amiodarone, none, right? What's dentazine? None, it lasts six seconds, you're done, right? And beta blockers and calcium blockers already tested you on this, right? Which was glucagon. And then finally, we got dejoxin. Alright. Is the brand name, but yeah. Okay, alright, now as a vine for chemo, so dexbethazone, repertans, danzitron, these are meds we give IV push, right? And which one of these prolong QT? That's drawn. On dance trunk class. Alright, too fast, speed shock, or the signs of speed shock? They got flushed, either give a surge response or flushed, they are vasodilated, right? This rhythm is kind of nonspecific, they probably attack cardiac though, they're dilated. Right, flushed, tacky. Right, hypotensive. They could have allergic reaction to, alright? I already tested you on red man syndrome. Sync versus non-sync versus unsync? Okay, so recognize like who gets what, because these are life threatening, you should know what to do, right? So who gets unsynchronized or synchronized, right? So don't select PEA, how do you know someone's PEA? It says that they have no pulse, right? Epi for all lethal, that's, that's true story, alright? QTC, talked about those. I notes here to what I talked about on the previous deal, previous review. So I'm not sure with this, I think these are different labs for him, maybe? Alright, we already tested a lot of these already. Alright, so we got six minutes, what do you want to talk about first? And so, I've got deja vu, why are these here again? So idiomatic and pace, for sure, yeah. And junctional could be on there, so that, it's like, what's someone that's symptomatic? Alright, so EKGs, right, symptomatic? Who's symptomatic, how you know they're symptomatic? Right, and if they have, as far as like Brady arrhythmias, right? We're going to talk about paste, right? Failure to sense, failure to pace, failure to? Alright, so you want to recognize those differences, right? Right, junctional and what is it called? Idiomatic. Right? Anything else that you want to hit before we wrap it up? Turilysis, we kind of talked about, but yes. Alright, P12 symptoms, yes. Black tar, what is pica? That's eating like ice, ramen, dirt, right? Paint chips. Black tar, stools, there's iron. Alpha fetoprotein was also? Testicular cancer, right? Helped with cirrhosis. Like who do you give albumin to? Who do you give diuretics to, right? Hemoman will be there, right? Okay, so who gets diuretics and what diuretics are they? It's not for a GI bleed, GI bleed is important though. Asides does, or A sites. Okay, so who gets diuretics? Asides does, right? That's like, if they are not gone to the complication of hepatoreno, but if they are, we want to control their sodium, and we want, and we can, their extra fluid, now we can give them what? What diuretics? For most side and spironolactone. Right, who gets diuretics? And then like, who gets, you know, after bleed, after GI bleed? Meds, right? What's, what else do we have? We got fatty cephalopathy meds, right? Lactulose, right? And rifaximin, not rifampin? Not rifampin. Alright, what's rifampin for? For TB, right? And then likely cause of HE is what? Is SIRS or sepsis, right? And that's a good point for EKGs is, you know, try and connect it to the other pieces, right? So, you know, other chapters, right? So like hematology, what's the, what's the connection? They got anemia, right? They're going to be what? They're going to be, yeah, they're going to be tacky, right? If they, you know, just think of the causes of tachycardia, they got low oxygen, that's anemia. They have, what else? They got, what other life threatening situation might happen with hematology? Sickle cells not really cause, cause a, you know, EKG change unless they're hypoxic, and then we got to fix hypoxia. Infarction, like an MI? Yeah, you could, you could argue that, but you don't, you haven't learned MI, that's, that's next rotation. I see, like intracellular hemorrhage, what caused what? Yeah, a hemorrhage in the brain again, that's, that's for message three, where you learn about ICP. Good. TLS, right? And what is TLS EKG change? Hyper, what? But what's the one? Which one of those could cause problems? Hyperkalemia, right? Yeah. Okay. So heme and then we can do, what else? Maybe some musculoskeletal. Right? So like they give me unicompromised or if they're, who's immunocompromised? And infection can also be heme, right? Right? And that's going to be like SLRA, right? But puts you at risk for, for what, what disrhythmia? Or just tacky, right? They have an infection, right? And then going back here also for sickle cell. Right? So they have what's like not so much EKGs, but like, like the link between Hs and Ts. Right? Guys, what, what do you want to fix in SED, SED, S, sorry, SCD? It's to correct. Like three ways to say correct. How do you, what do you, what's the goal with SCD? Hypoxia, what else? Acidosis and dehydration, hypovolemia. And what else can you fix? Huh? Hypo what? Hypothermia? I mean, I mean, they're hyperthermic, they'll be dehydrated and that's bad for sickle cells. Hypothermia is, I don't, I don't see a connection. What's that? Iron? No. What else is on Hs and Ts that sickle cell disease have? Hmm. Good. Thrombus, right? Right? PE and they also have MI, right? So that's kind of a connection to Hs and Ts, right? All right. You got two minutes. Any other votes? All right. Does that help? All right. So any questions? You can reach out to me, right? Think it pops up. And you can look at this as well and see is that, is that correct or not? Yes. Review unlikely unless everybody finishes and the, you know, 45 minutes. Then we have lecture time to review, but yeah. Not likely, not 100% likely. What's that? Another review code you can have, you can, I'll give you that. So, yeah, but there won't be like a group review or anything like that. Yeah. The nine o'clock for OSD. Hmm. What's that? Yeah.
Hi, Chris, Daniel, yeah? Uh, which one would be the priority, man?